I'd like to call to order the Penn Trafford School District Board of Directors meeting on April 14th at 7:02. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mr. Lego.
Okay.
Here.
Mr. Kachas.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
President.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell is absent due to work. Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stolbar is absent due to work.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a cornered president.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th?
No moves.
Motion by Mr. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Trucey.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Turn it over to Dr. Harris for information.
All right, thank you. Last week, we talked about Representative George Dunbar, and we was talking about different things he was working on for PlanCon, and this week, we're actually happy to have him in the audience, so we're going to give him a few minutes to speak first.
Where do you want me to stand there? I don't know where...anyways, thanks for having me. I have had discussions over the last few years with many members of the board about PlanCon. For those of you that don't understand what PlanCon is, PlanCon is a funding system for the states to reimburse school districts with construction projects. Unfortunately, the state has not been leaving up to their end of the bargain. There are over 350 requests for PlanCon that have held up. They're not being paid, and those schools that are undergoing construction projects are having trouble figuring out how exactly they're going to pay for the whole thing, Penn Trafford being one of them as well. We have talked in ad nauseam about this in Harrisburg, and fortunately, we've finally reached a point where Representative Seth Grove has introduced legislation, which is HB 2124, which I hope everyone on the board has had a chance to look over and see what we're talking about. We're trying to streamline the process, as well as provide additional funding. And HB 2124 is a request for an additional $100 million this year for funding for PlanCon to start moving the ball forward. I don't know where Penn Trafford's...there are so many steps in at A through H, I'm sure Brett probably knows that. I don't know where Penn Trafford sits in the whole system, but there are so many projects that are backed up even at level H that aren't being funded completely. So HB 2124 tries to alleviate those pressures. This is at...I mean, with Jay, we've talked about this many times as well, getting that money moving forward. Not only that, but also has an interest reimbursement for those school districts that were held up, to reimburse them for interest for delayed payments, as well as an option for lump sum payments, where as opposed to being paid annually for 30 years as you make those debt payments on your construction projects, what HB 2124 is, is gives an option of a lump sum payment upfront, which would be 75% of the total construction value. So, we're working on it. It is in Education Committee. It had a hearing in Education Committee a couple weeks ago. It is moving along through the process. I can't say for certain where it's going to go, but at least it is being talked about for a change, because for two years, I've had to look at school board members here and say, "Oh, well, we're talking about...we're actually doing something right now, and hopefully we can get some results." I gladly take any questions on PlanCon. It is not my area of expertise, but I do know something about it. But I would ask the board, the one favor and request I do have of the board is, if you read through HB 2124, any comments you have, please feel free to let me know, and secondarily, and most importantly, if it is something you endorse, give me some type of resolution that I can go back to Harrisburg with on your behalf. That's it on PlanCon, but I'll take questions on that or anything else school-related.
I have a question, George. Okay. I was here 20 years ago, our last building project, when we did work on every building. It was $25 million we put up, and 30% of it went back to the state, and that made approximately mid-thirties with all renovations. And there was prevailing wage, and we paid it because, with no problem, because state gives us 30%, and they're going to pay it, they're fine. Well, now, George, what I'm having a hard time with, and I was...I got some sticker shock, I figured prevailing wage would be between $1 to $1.5 million, ends up being $3.2 million.
Yes.
I mean, to me, that was a huge shock.
Yeah.
Now, if they're going to eliminate the PlanCon, and we won't ever need money, why do we still have to pay prevailing wage? I mean, that's just not fair to Penn Trafford taxpayers who lose $3.2 million. I think that's, you know...and last April, we met with Senator Ward at the Penn Area Library, and I asked her the same question, because I knew what prevailing wage, how expensive it's going to be, because it's going to be more expensive than I thought. And she says something was on the...on the gen...or something being mentioned, that they're going to exempt small boroughs and school districts from paying prevailing wage. Well, she's never got back to us on that. Is that true? Is there anything involved in it?
There is.
Give me your opinion, also, why do we still have to pay prevailing wage, or is possible we might not get one penny from the state?
Yeah. Prevailing wage is mandated by law for school districts, as well as local municipalities. There is legislation out there to eliminate it for school districts, as well as eliminate it for municipalities and boroughs. Right now, the limit is $25,000. Any product over $25,000 falls on prevailing wage. Now, we all know, we're not doing any products under $25,000. In order to change it, it needs legislation. The legislation's introduced, it's not moving very far. The only change on prevailing wage that I've seen since I've been there is, as part of the construction bill, the gas tax bill that went through, the transportation bill, they increased the threshold on prevailing wage there from $25,000 to $100,000. Again, that's not making a whole lot of difference, because there's not that many road jobs that are under $100,000. That's all we were able to get through on the transportation bill. So, the reality is, is what would we have enough votes to get passed? And it's a very hard lift. It's a very difficult lift. For me, you know, prevailing wage is an argument of, are you paying a living wage for those employees, those people that are working on these projects? And all construction companies are. Prevailing wage is an artificially high wage. It costs taxpayers a lot of money. Like you said, I don't know the exact percentage difference. I've heard anywhere from 17% to 25% increase.
I've heard about 25, okay.
Increase in wages based on prevailing wage. It is...there is bills out there, it's being talked about. I'm not going to disagree with you, Nick. If we're not doing PlanCon, why are we holding you accountable on prevailing wage laws? Hopefully, we'll get PlanCon done, and hopefully, we'll also have a discussion.
Well, if PlanCon comes back, and you know, I wouldn't even be saying this. Yeah. If I knew PlanCon was coming for sure, you know, but I don't know where PlanCon stands, you know? I don't know how it's going to stand, and that's just a long fall of mind. Like you said, our last renovation 20 years ago, nobody said a word about prevailing wage because we got reimbursed from the state, and that was just fine, but you know, that...I mean, the state don't tell us what to pay our superintendent, or teachers, or custodians, or secretary, which will tell us what to pay our labor. And that just, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. That's okay. I want...I want to say also, thank you for coming.
Oh, no problem.
That was kind of you. That's very important. Thank you.
And, you know, what it comes down to is, do we have enough votes to get something like that passed? And it's not an easy lift, to be totally honest.
I have a question for you also. Thank you very much for your efforts, for what you're trying to do, you're the first point in this area of all the more time. I appreciate that. How to do this with the person in all different areas?
Just my pers...the question pertains to, some of your colleagues are on the border with this thing and supported 2124. If we contacted your office, would you be able to share with us who these other fellow representatives, we may be able to try to approach in a different way through contacts we know to try to encourage them to come along and join your efforts?
And yeah, certainly, and so you understand. What I normally do with issues like this is that my first step is to go to my own delegation, the other members of the Westmoreland County delegation, because then as a collective voice, both DNR, this is not one party specific, both DNR, if we go as a delegation, we could help move things forward. After that, the next obvious choice for me is Education Committee, where I know everybody on the Education Committee, and we'll approach them with the letter. If we have it out, Education Committee onto the floor, then I would need to do a little bit of research to find out where everybody is, but what we normally do, if I get it to Education Committee, at least I could get that, your resolution, on the record in the committee, and then everybody can see it from there. And again, that's up to you guys. I don't want to put thoughts into your head, whether you support or don't support something. It's totally up to you.
I would like to add a little bit closer to who's there. Do you feel that that delegation that you just discussed is supportive of this legislation, our local delegation?
I... I would...
The ones I talked to said they were.
I do believe so, Mr. Leonard. In all honesty, I think there's 370 school districts that have stuff sitting in the PlanCon pipeline, which pretty much covers everybody. I mean, how many school districts are there in the state? 500? 500. And 370 have...
We actually have a little scourge here of 300 and some. I thought it was only 160 some.
No, it's 300 and some.
I was really discouraged at 160 some.
Yeah.
Because the PlanCon that we stand to gain around is 28, 10 million, depending on the size of the project, the rate issue is around 3 million. So, there's a big offset there, if we can get this PlanCon issue.
And the bottom line is, really comes down to dollars. To get PlanCon moving forward, we would need an additional $100 million in this year's budget. Now, the question is, where does that money come from? And that's where you have some give and take from some legislators that may not be willing to have their oxtails on something else, because we have to fund the money somewhere else to fully fund PlanCon. And that's also a topic of conversation for this board as well, because somebody, one of the representative in Education Committee offered up that, okay, this year, the governor's prepared to propose a $240 million, $240 million increase to the Ready to Learn Block Grant. Would you be willing to sacrifice some of that $240 million to put $100 million towards PlanCon? So, I mean, that's something that needs to be discussed. Well, me personally, I'm not in favor. I mean, the $240 million is the needed money as it is. I don't want to detract from that to put it towards PlanCon. I think we needed $240 million for our classrooms. So, I mean, that money would, for me, that money would have to come from somewhere else. But that's a topic of conversation, where does the money come from? And since I brought that up, I also would love to hear from the board, your opinion on the $240 million for the Ready to Learn Block Grants, because there are caveats, strings attached to that. Different school districts can use that money in different ways, as well as because it's not part of our basic education funding formula, it's not a recurring thing. You know, if it was in our BEF funding formula, every year, you would get that money. But because it's proposed, it's not part of the BEF, it's a one-shot deal, and next year, whoever the governor is, and whoever's doing the budget, it could be a completely different number. They're not to the whole...they're not held to the whole harmless agreement that guarantees that money going forward. So, I don't know if that's a plus or a minus for a school district like Penn Trafford. The good thing about it being a standalone accountability block grant is, it's based on ADMs or pupils, average daily attendance, as opposed to the BEF funding formula, which is not based upon pupils, it's based upon need. So, if it was part of the BEF, Penn Trafford would get less, but you would guarantee it every year. As part of a block grant, it's not guaranteed every year, but Penn Trafford School District would get more. So, that's something I'd love to hear back from the board on.
I'd like to know what that...you can know about it. How can we...how do we clarify?
Well, there are certain criteria that establishes, you know, what you can spend money for. I think that we do a very good job spending our money very wisely, and the fact that it has strings attached is not something that's very attractive to me. What would be really more important, I think, is that we finally establish a predictable BEF, Basic Education Funding Formula, which we haven't had for many, many years. And I think there's a committee that's been, or a commission that's been...
Yes, sir.
...charged with studying that. You know, we have a lot of studies, but we get very little action, unfortunately. So, the money would certainly help us. Again, I think the things we do, we'd like to see as few strings attached as possible, give us the flexibility to do with the money that, you know, what we produce as the results that we have. But we really need to fix both the special education formula and the basic ed formula, and hopefully, this time, these commissions will come up with something that works, is predictable, and, you know, moving forward, it would help us develop budgets for the long-term future.
Historically though, Brett, money that was one-time money, we basically used it for what it was intended, and we didn't plow it into other things where it would come back the bite as either the following year or the year after. I mean, I've been on it six years now, and I don't think we've ever used money that was one-time money for, or money that we felt was going to be taken away at some point to really balance the budget.
Well, that's...I would say that that's not true entirely when we talk about the stimulus dollars that we received, because there was no guarantee of those dollars moving forward. However, at the time, the governor cut back the state's contribution to such a point that we really had no option other than using it for salaries and operating expenses.
But it wasn't reoccurring money?
Correct.
Right.
It was not. But in that case, it was such a huge number, we really had no choice.
Okay. Because I just remember with money that was for technology and things like that...
Right.
We used it just for that.
Correct.
A lot of other fellow school districts were plowing in the salaries and other things like that.
We did use our instructional coaches to calculate on block grant, and as the amount decreased, we finally actually discontinued the program as well.
Right. And that's part of the problem with these strings attached, is that, you know, some of the things you're allowed to use the money for really aren't one-year programs, they're not effective for just one or two years. Correct. So, that's kind of where...
Get you started, you know?
Exactly.
Figure out how you're going to fund it.
Right. Exactly. Correct.
Well, there's any other questions? Garrett, go ahead.
Yeah. Kind of the white elephant now. Peasars.
Yes.
Do we see anything in the line of any relief for the school districts?
What I believe you will see is, is there was a compromise bill that was just dropped, just introduced last week. I can't recall the bill number. It was introduced by Representative Tobash. It essentially is new hire-only type of legislation. There's no change to current benefits, there's no change to retiree benefits. Alls it really is saying is, any new hire that comes into the state system for whether they're teachers, or employees, or state troopers, would be under a hybrid plan, as opposed to a defined benefit plan. A hybrid plan would be, first $50,000 of wages would be on a defined benefit plan, just like everybody is right now. Anybody over $50,000 would be on...monies above $50,000 would be on a 401K-style plan. Essentially, and I'll use analogy that my friend, my friend Representative Vankevich to the north always uses, is, we've been a boat on water, and the boat has a hole in it, so it's kind of sinking, and we've been sitting there with a spoon, kind of throwing water out of the boat, but the boat just keeps getting lower, and the only way we're going to stop it is to plug the hole. This plugs the hole, but it's not going to give us any immediate relief as far as near short-term budgets. The one thing I would be concerned about is if the administration would use something legislation like that to say, "Okay, now we can further color payments, because in the future, we won't need to be putting as much in." I think that's what got us into the problem to begin with. I think we need to fund it fully. The problem has always been at the state level, not funding it fully. We have a $50 billion deficit because of it. The one question that I've asked everybody as we're going through this, the downside is, is with a hybrid plan, a 50,000 DB plan, and then a 401K on top of that, will you still be able to attract the talent you need to run your schools properly? And that's something I would need to hear from you as well, what your opinion is on that, because that is the one concern, is, you know, will we still be able to attract talent to teachers to Pennsylvania?
I'm personally going to be able to, for sure.
I believe that as well, but I prefer to hear from you, because you're certainly the experts in this arena, not me.
George, is that the argument that you're hearing?
No, that's part of the argument. The other argument really is, and I haven't gone through the bill in detail, Scott, but the other argument is, is if there's breaks in service, let's say somebody's a teacher in the Penn Trafford School District right now and is under the defined benefit plan, if they have a break in service, let's say they take a leave to go home and raise their children per se, when they come back, can they come back under the old plan, or are they in this new plan? That's one of the arguments I've heard, which I'm sure we could deal with that legislatively to clear that up, to make sure if someone's presently in the plan, they stay in the plan. The other argument that I hear is that it doesn't do anything to alleviate cash problems right now, which I'm not going to argue with, that is the truth. And if administration, this administration, or any administration just uses that to get better actuarial reports, so they don't have to put as much in, it defeats the whole purpose.
It seems like you don't write your...
To me, yes.
You need to organize the system.
To me, yes, as long as we...as long as everybody here tells me we can still attract talent.
Well, we're always faced with the overall picture of financing the whole operation, and whenever we look at our budget, and we...these discussions go on all the time in-house here, we have to not only try to keep the talent we have onboard, because there's always that option, they'll go somewhere else, but we have to look at this big, overburdening Peasar debt, and we have to look at whether we can even give our folks a raise. And we only have so many dollars to work with, because we have constraints we have to work with. So, keeping the talent and attracting the talent, I think everybody...I can't see why everybody doesn't have that problem. Why are we an anomaly? Why doesn't every school district, why aren't they all wrestling with it? I don't know. Maybe they are.
Every school district is in the same situation. It's a question of this state versus another state, that may have a different type of plan.
But if you look around our states, states that are around us, we have the best benefits. We have the best sal...
Presently, yes.
We have the best salary. But so, even if you cut back a little bit on the pension, you look at Ohio, which I think is right behind us in this area, they're still like way behind us. You know, the average number of steps in Ohio is like 25. You know, we're...in Pennsylvania, was it like 15 or 17?
17, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, I know where we're at as a school district, I mean, as far as the averages. Our salaries are higher, their pension, their medical is not as good as ours, so this would be one piece in the puzzle, but I would think that it's not going to be such a great piece that they're going to say, "Okay, we're all going to go to Ohio and teach." I just don't see that being a reality. Or go to New York, where the cost of living is so much higher.
Or Maryland, where my daughter teaches, where the cost of living is a lot higher.
Well, you know where my kids teach, George. My kids in a private school.
And the other argument is, is that in 2010, the state did take some steps under Act 120 to alleviate some of the pension problems, and that they haven't fully taken effect yet, and why aren't you just waiting for that to take effect? But the reality is, helps us along that lines. But again, like with anything, I appreciate any feedback you all have. You always all know how to reach me and give me any comments you have.
But I will say, George, the pension is a nice draw.
I believe so.
For talented people. It is a night, no matter how you want to read it, it's a nice draw.
And it's not just the teachers that the concerns are. I mean, I have state troopers, I have state employees.
It's a nice draw.
And we have to make sure that we always can not only attract good people, but keep our people in Pennsylvania. Our most...it's the saddest thing is when our most precious assets leave the state.
That's happened, but it's a nice draw.
But our kids are leaving the state because they can't get the jobs here. You have first kids and my kids.
Yep. And I have another one who wants to be a teacher, so.
Well, I have two already, so you can catch up.
I want to thank you for coming. I know Brett and I did meet with you earlier regarding PlanCon, and appreciate your help then. We will look into a resolution for PlanCon for next month. This, tonight, we're actually doing a resolution for prevailing wages, which is kind of what Nick addressed to you. So, that's one thing, and then, like I said, every help we can have, we appreciate.
I appreciate your guys' feedback, and allow me to speak to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George.
We have another representative with us tonight, our Student Union Representative, Lucas Johnson.
Thank you. All right. So, first off, I want to start with prom. There's one thing to be said about prom, and it is definitely being seen around the school. So, tickets are being sold this week through April 25th, and prom will be held on May 2nd. So, as the year comes to a halt, Student Union will also have to find a new crew, and officer elections will be held at the conclusion of this month for the next school year. Strike the Musical was an overall success for the musical crew, also selling out some of the shows and having a buzz around the community. Everyone did a great job in the performance. We're Cash Dash is having a grand promotion for this month for the students. We'll be giving out a tux, hair, nails, et cetera. Now, the girls love that. For this month's promotion, in May, we will have a promotion directed towards summer, and it will have Kennywood tickets and Sandcastle tickets. The Community Action Program and the high school have just finished their spring food drive. Over 13,000 items were collected and filling close to 270 boxes of food. These were distributed to local food banks in the Pentaucha community, along with the teachers, administration, and students are to be commended for such an outstanding job. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Take care.
Next, we have our favorite part of the meeting. We have the Students of the Month, and we're going to begin with the Student of the Month from McCollum. So, Mr. Maraskin?
You want to go first? Go ahead, Nick. Okay. Now, we'll do...we'll do Trafford Elementary.
I lied, I'm going to start with Trafford Elementary.
Okay. All right.
Gives me great pleasure to introduce Maya Malloy as this month's Elementary Student of the Month. Maya is a first grade student in Mrs. Wiseman's class at Trafford Elementary. She is the seven-year-old daughter of Anthony and Colleen Malloy, we're back here, and the big sister of her sister's Ella, who's in kindergarten, and Harper, who is eight months old, and her brother Finley, who's three years old. Maya enjoys swimming in her pool and playing with her sisters and brothers. She says they are all funny, really nice. She says she's in control right now. That sounds like it, right? She likes when they go on vacation. She's been to Arizona to visit her aunt and uncle. She's been to Disneyland and Disney World, Ocean City and Myrtle Beach. Maya states the best thing about all of those places were, she was with her family the whole time. Maya is a very fan of her one-year-old puppy, Archie. Apparently, Archie is very playful and licks a lot of people. Maya's teacher, Mrs. Wiseman, states that Maya is an E student. She actively participates in class discussions, in activities, follows directions the first time they are given, doesn't leave anyone out, and is a leader. She tries very...her very best in all that she does. If she does not understand something, she doesn't hesitate to ask for help, so that she can better understand it. She usually has a smile on her face every day, and it's just a joy to have in class. Maya, with all that being said, I'd like to congratulate you on being this month's Student of the Month.
You know, I'm the oldest two in the family, it's a big responsibility. But you like swimming, right? I'm going to see you on the swim team someday? No? I thought you'd be on the swim team? What do you want to do?
I like swimming, but I don't know how to swim.
Oh, you got to learn. You're little, you'll learn. I hope to see you on the swim team, how's that? Okay. Congratulations.
Okay. All right, Maya.
Next, we have the Student of the Month from McCollum Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce the Elementary Student of the Month, the second one we have this month, from McCollum Elementary, Mara Sumon. Come on up, Mara. Maya showed you the X-spot, so you get to stand there. Mara is the daughter of Kathy Bob Sumon. Mara has a sister, Madison, who's in fifth grade at McCollum Elementary, and a brother, Cam, who's in eighth grade at Penn Middle. When talking with Mara's parents about Mara, they were quick to mention how she has a big heart, always wants people around her to be happy, and tries to help everyone. Her parents expressed that she loves school, wants to do well in everything that she undertakes, and enjoys being around her friends, which she has many. At home, Mara is very active, playing all sorts of sports, especially with her brother and sister. Mara's parents stated that she loves for the entire family to be together and to have a good time. When talking with Mara, I asked what she liked about school, and she said the best part about school was her teachers. That was a good response. She was very quick to mention that her teachers are very nice, fun, and love to teach her new material. She's always excited to come to school each and every day. Mara's favorite subject in school is math. I asked why math, and she stated that she loves numbers. Mara loves to compete with family and friends, and it's not uncommon to see her playing basketball in the gym or the driveway at home. When I spoke to Madison and Cam about Mara, they both identified her as smart and funny, and they said she can always be counted on to make everyone laugh at home, and likes to be the comedian. This very, this very much goes along with Mom's comments to me in regards to Mara always seems to find her way in the center of attention, sort of like you are right now. Madison stated, when I talked to her, that Mara was very important to her because she's my best friend and always there to pick me up when I'm down. When Mara was asked why she wanted, what she wanted to be when she finally grows up, which I'm not sure that she will ever do with her great personality, is to become a basketball player and/or a teacher. Mara's teachers identify, identified her as having a personality that is contagious. People just want to be around her. She's a strong student, who is very bright and conscientious. She is a tireless worker and very persistent in all that she undertakes. She was identified as very athletic, enjoys many spoits, sports, her favorite being basketball. She is very thoughtful and sincere, and is an excellent friend. She would do anything for anyone at any time. Mara is also very considerate of others' feelings. Her most admirable quality, they said, she is a natural leader and an excellent role model for others. It is easy to see that Mara is going to be a very successful individual in her future endeavors, whether it be on the court or in the classroom. Congratulations, Mara, on being the McCollum student.
Thank you.
I think your mom played basketball, right?
Yeah.
She coached too, right?
Yeah.
I think my daughter played for her. Now, you know, you saw how good, how well the girls' basketball team did this year. Maybe we'll see you there on a Whipple championship one day. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we actually have a middle school student and Mr. Rogers Hollen, the school principal.
I'd like to introduce Jeffrey Thomas.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Jeffrey is an eighth grader at Trafford Middle School. Today, joining him is his mother, father, grandma, and grandpa, and a few other extended family members. Thanks for joining us. This year so far, Jeffrey has earned straight A's in all of his subjects. In fact, as I looked at his grades, it was, it was not uncommon to see 100%. But after talking to Jeffrey, it comes with no surprise that he's doing this well because in elementary school, he set a goal to have all A's in elementary school, middle school, and high school. And so far, he has done just that, and kept up the end of his bargain. And I have no doubt that that will continue. He's a member of the Spectrum since second, second grade, and has participated in a variety of competitions. Jeffrey has only missed one day of school, and that was in the sixth grade due to a broken arm, just one day. His friends know, know him to be quiet, yet he has an interesting sense of humor. His mother said he is close with his family, and that he is analytical and curious about new things, and is always researching ideas he doesn't understand. When Jeffrey is not studying, he enjoys being with friends and spending time outside. He particularly enjoys sights, smells, and sounds of nature, and studying and observing animals. In fact, his future plan of study may be biology. He has played baseball, but finds himself enjoying most his favorite team, the Pittsburgh Pirates. He is also very involved in the middle youth ministry at his church with various service activities. Here are a few comments from his teachers. Jeffrey is an exemplary student. He is willing to help other students and kind to everyone. He is unassuming and modest about his abilities. He is a pleasure to have in class. Jeffrey is an exceptional student in all respects. He excels as a reader and writer in literature and language arts. One of his strongest traits is his full attention to detail in all that he does. Always polite, Jeffrey demonstrates understanding character traits such as politeness, responsibility, and kindness. He gets along with his peers and teachers alike. It is an honor to have Jeffrey in class. Jeffrey, congratulations, we're proud of everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more people shorter than me up here, so. Anyway, obviously, you're a very hard worker. Do you like the Pirates?
Yes.
You go to a lot of games?
Yep.
Maybe we'll see you, I got a 20-game package. They're going to, they're going to have a winning, another winning season?
Yep.
All right, that's the kind of spirit.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And finally, we have our Student of the Month from the high school, and Mr. Saracini will have the honor of greeting.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce Danielle Adamson. As she's making her way up over there. I'm going to start. Danielle is a senior here at Penn Trafford High School. She's the daughter of Patrick and Rhonda Adamson.
And is currently a student at Central, Central Westmoreland Career and Technical Center, where she's maintaining a 4.0 GPA average in her cosmetology show. Danielle has been consistently on the director's distinguished honors list, and she has participated and twice been nominated in a variety of styling and nail art competitions. She is also currently maintaining nearly a 4.0 GPA average here at the high school. She is an active participant in the USA Skills Competition, where she placed seventh last year in cosmetology, and recently, last week, just placed third in public speaking. When I asked her teachers about how she performs here at the school, Mr. Cazaglow indicated that Danielle is awesome, in all capital letters with four exclamation, four exclamation points after it, "A pleasure to have in class and a model seat." Mr. Davis stated that Danielle has the rare ability to combine an infectious personality with academic ability, and that her leadership qualities demonstrated themselves, as she was able to help others in class succeed with her. Mrs. Donnelly stated that she takes the initiative and helps to make sure that things go smoothly, and she is very compassionate and is sincerely interested in helping the preschoolers prepare for kindergarten. Outside of school, Danielle works at Dave's in Delmont, putting her cosmetology training to good use and building a client base so upon graduation, she can immediately transition into her trade. Now, this type of drive, dedication, and commitment speaks to her future and to the, and speaks volumes to what type of young lady Danielle is. Now, in my mind, though, when I kind of approached Danielle with this, she didn't really take to it. She was more interested in putting the spotlight on all of her classmates. She wanted to talk about their successes and how good they do at VOTech. She didn't want anything. And it was that humbleness that kind of pushed it above and beyond for me. So it's really because of your drive, dedication, commitment, humbleness, and academic achievements that I'd like to honor you as the high school student of the month.
Thank you.
Great job. I like the announce. So with your personality and your interest in people, I can see you having your own shop someday, someday. Is that your plan?
Maybe.
I think you do a good job. I think you'll be successful at it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
We're going to take a few moments to take the picture of all of our Students of the Month winners over here for the press. If you can come over for a few moments, I'd appreciate it. And if parents want to take a picture too, you may come over as well. Parents, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our hour-long so meeting, or you may go now. No one's ever stayed. But if you want to, you're always welcome, but we understand. Thank you so much. Thanks for everything that your kids do for our school to make us look good. I am going to mention, I'm going to just push D and E real quick, because the murder, I know we was talking about that earlier. Last week, we discussed the fact that the township wanted to promote new businesses coming to Penn Trafford by offering a lurch of which is a three-year tax incentive. On May 5th, we will have a public hearing with the local commissioners during our school board meeting to discuss this opportunity. As discussed last week, we feel that any incentive to attract new businesses is much needed in Penn Township. Now, there was going to be something on the agenda tonight for us to approve, but since the commissioners haven't approved it first, we have to not approve it tonight, so tonight we're not going to have, it won't be on or approved. Just to give an update, I know we were talking about the tragedy that happened in Franklin Regional School District truly hit home with our district being so close. Our thoughts and fervors are with their community. As a district, we wanted to provide support. Our students actually came up with a plan for the banner last week. The address is higher for Franklin Regional on the 11th of April to show them that we care and encourage them to stay strong. Chief Otto is going to address all PT admin tomorrow during our administration meeting. The admin will then pool their staff as to see what their concerns are as well, and Chief Otto will be back on the 21st of April, when we have our all-day-long professional development committee. We will share some time with Chief Otto to discuss safety. After that meeting, we are also going to reconvene our emergency management team. As you know, that we meet with, not only is it just our local and township police, we include Trafford Manor Rescue, all the fire departments are invited. Last time, we had representatives from the road crew, and from the Penn Township officials also came, so we will be discussing, you know, the incident and looking at our plan and seeing what we can do to continue trying to maintain safety.
I want to mention also that when that happened last Wednesday, that Matt, Brett, and Scott went to Franklin Regional to offer their assistance in whatever way they could help. And we do appreciate the time they took. They're busy fellows, and so.
And actually, when we went there with the intent to help, it actually was a learning experience, because it gave us the firsthand look at seeing what was actually going on and actually some ideas too, for our own district and for our own management plan, just kind of gave us the realization that how close we are to home and the need to always be proactive.
Yeah, and maybe at this time, it would be appropriate if we just kind of took a moment and thought about those kids. I mean, there's still three or four kids that are still very critical in a hospital. I know they're improving, but they have a long way to go. They have a lot of trauma in their lives, a lot, lot to move beyond, not only their physical injuries, but the mental issues that they're, I'm sure they're going to have to deal with. So if we could just take one moment to think of those kids. Thank you.
We already mentioned with prevailing wages, George Dunbar was here earlier, and he was talking about, we have a resolution tonight for prevailing wages, and we are looking ahead to get one on PlanCon under his recommendation tonight. Tonight, there is an out-of-state trip that needs to be approved for the students in the high school, Route 180 class. They will be going to Baltimore for the day. The students wrote and received a grant through our foundation to cover some of the cost of the trip. The students did a presentation for the admin today, and we encourage you to approve it. This year, I'm proud to say that 95% of the students are going to continue their education for serve the country, the military, after they graduate in May. We still have one undecided, and the teachers are working with us due to up until the very last moment to make sure there's a plan. So that is good news.
Those kids did a wonderful job presenting, by the way. They presented to all the principals and Dr. Harris, and very, very well presented, and the kids, you know, you remember when they were freshmen and sophomores, and now that some of these kids are seniors, and the confidence and, and the way they present themselves, and they just, they just feel like a million dollars right now, and they feel like they're, they're able to tackle the world and what that program and all their experiences they've had in there have, how it's helped them, that the two teachers, Miss Harris and Miss Hayes, have really, really worked with those kids to build that confidence up and get them proficient on their Keystone exams. It's just a great environment, and those kids are really appreciative of the opportunity to be in that room and to make those advances, and are very appreciative of their teachers as well. So it's a well-deserved trip for those kids, and they're going to continue that learning experience in Baltimore.
I also wanted to mention, I did follow up with a gentleman that spoke last week regarding the libraries, and we didn't have some new data that he provided, and also data that I received, and I'm going to share with the board in next month, we might have a recommendation after studying the data and reviewing it. And Shrek, I know our student union representative mentioned that it drew a lot of tickets. I actually asked for the count, because it was 4,914 tickets were sold to see the Shrek Musical. It was an amazing musical. I know, I saw many board members, Dr. Trey was there, and Dallas was there, and Nick had 11 tickets the other day.
You know, my kids, my grandkids like them a lot.
It was an excellent show, so thanks for all the support, the kids.
You see a lot of parent involvement there, a tremendous amount. It was, it was, it was tough to tell.
We couldn't do it without the parents. And they're.
And I also wanted to mention, I did get to see the showdown at Trafford as well with the musical.
How did Alice in Wonderland go?
Outstanding, outstanding. They had three of them, the girls had just died of my singers, and they had two boys that were Tweedle Dee and Tweedle Dum, they were great as well. I mean, it was really well done. So kudos to them as well.
It's good to hear that, because like I said, we need to, all that talent to come up to the high schools. That is great. And Penn Middle, when is your play?
Later in the end of, towards the end of May, the week before we break for the year, 23rd will be the 16th and the 17th, it's Beauty and the Beast.
And the nice.
No, I'm not playing.
And the nice thing about both of our Penn Middle and Trafford Middle, they each received grants the last two years from our foundation for microphone systems, so they really enhanced their program, and, you know, it helps our district out, because that's something we don't have to fund. And it helps the parents out, because for them to raise all that, that money, they would have had to put a lot of work, so this way they can put it all towards the kids and the play, and that's what you need, for sure.
One of the things after the musical, I talked to Tom Becca Beck, who's the director, and he said what he's really excited about is that most of the leads, not all of them, most of the leads were juniors. So they will be back next year, so expect more great things to come.
And finally, I have Mr. Englaze, he's going to share some happy information to the school district.
Yes, the Pittsburgh Business Times just released the honor roll rankings for the school districts in Western Pennsylvania and in the state, and Penn Trafford, I'm proud to announce, ended up being number 11 out of 105, and that's based on PSSA scores and Keystone scores over the past three years, and they weigh, the most heavy, most recent years are weighted more heavily, but it's very good when you're sitting up there with some of the best schools in, in Western Pennsylvania, we're number 11. In the state, we're number 42 out of 500, so that puts us in the top 10% in both categories. So very, very good job, well done by our kids, teachers, administration, so great job, congratulations.
Thank you so much, and that's all we have to report.
Okay, at this time, we will have recognition of visitors. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. They may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. I have a list of residents who wish to address the board. I will call you up in the order that you signed up. Sally Bradley.
Hi. State Route 130, or 847, State Route 130, Level Bridge. And just a few things. First, I'd like to ditto the comments made by Shrek and the Alice in Wonderland. Both were excellent. And just a moment about Alice in Wonderland. Those students were so excited, having so much fun. It was just an enjoyable experience for them, and that fun moved over into the audience. It was really a fun production. Secondly, to support, say I support our administrators and our students for their support at Franklin Regional. I think that was really great. And third, on PlanCon, I'm glad we're finally getting in. I'm glad we're finally getting involved with Representative Dunbar to push Plan Con maybe back into existence. But I ask you, can we go another step and talk to these other school districts that are waiting for money? I mean, I don't know if they're doing something or are they depressed and saying, "It's not worth it," or whatever. But if we can communicate with them and get them working with their legislators so that George isn't working alone. You know, we have at least 75 school districts out of us to receive money and maybe more, according to what was said tonight. So, let's get them on board. Let's tell the government we want something happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Ed Lotzner?
Yes. 308 Skyview Drive North. Very quick question. I was looking at the budget, and I was just curious, how much money does Penn Trafford School District pay to various charter schools out of the general fund?
We've addressed that several months ago. I don't have the figure offhand. It was somewhere, if I recall, around $700,000. Do you remember?
I'm sorry?
I think it's around $700,000, but I don't have that information with me.
I think it was either charter or cyber.
It was both, charter and cyber.
Is there any way to put that as a line item in the budget as to how much, you know, goes toward the charter schools?
On the state form, it is not differentiated. It gets rolled into tuition. And we're prescribed to use the state form. But it is a substantial number.
That isn't shrinking.
It's not shrinking.
No, unfortunately, it's ever since I've been here, it keeps going higher and higher.
The list of problems affixed at the state level are quite numerous. Sorry? I said, the list of problems at the state level are quite numerous. And I appreciate you bringing it up. Believe me, I'm a retired teacher. Where I retired from, their cost was $3.5 million a year in charter schools.
In this study, we were, we had a couple years ago, we did have a study, and we were actually lower than the surrounding areas. But however, that amount is still like high for us.
Didn't Norman have like twice as many kids as us, or?
At one point, I believe.
Schools like McKeesport and Woodland Hills, which are similar in size to us, I mean, they're in the tens of millions of dollars. Penn Hills, same number of kids. So, we're fortunate that our bill is not larger, but it is a substantial cost, it is.
Well, it's like $2.5 million, wouldn't you say, for a budget?
Almost three. Almost three.
That's substantial.
Is anybody talking to our representative about, you know, I mean, they don't do any better in most cases than the regular public schools. And this is considered to be a very good school district.
Actually, when Brett and I met with George Dunbar earlier, that also came up, the topic.
I mean, my interest in it is, I see these corporations making hundreds of millions. The one paying their superintendent, they don't call them that, he's paid almost $5.5 million. I don't think you earn that money.
I don't think you have that command in the whole board, in all of our administration. Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I would suggest, again, you know, if you have a contact with Representative Dunbar or, you know, ask him, there's legislation out there that at least addresses the way that cyber charters are funded. It would give us some bit of relief. Again, Matt and I expressed that to him when we met with him. But pound him with that because that is one piece of legislation that came extremely close to passing last year, and then at the last minute, it fell. So, I think there might be support if, you know, the issues kept alive to get some relief there.
And we're constantly fighting that formula to be changed because we have buildings to take care of, to clean, to update. That costs, I mean, our costs aren't the same as what the cost is for cyber school.
I understand the problem. All the way down the line.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Katsas. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of April?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leonard.
Senator.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, we have no old business, do we?
No old business.
Okay, and I had a note about what we discussed in executive session, and I have just misplaced it. Ah, got it. I knew I had it. Okay, we did have an executive session. We don't have a need to meet at this time. During our executive session, we discussed personnel matters, negotiations, legal matters, student information, student issues, and we received information concerning the budget matters. Athletics and extracurricular. Dr. Koschko.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaching volunteers must have the Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Jessica Ojas, volunteer middle school softball coach. Joe Sullivan, volunteer assistant varsity track coach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Mr. Katsasik, budget and finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the following expenditures for the month of March 2014 for the high school renovation project according to schedule as listed below.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
I do have one question, but...
Yes.
The farm in Kissler, is that for the big document going on?
That is for the design of the cafeteria and kitchen area.
Lady of the block.
Correct. No, 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 no. We're not gonna do that well, believe me. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to award the following bid in accordance with the joint purchasing agreement with the Westmoreland Unit Number 7 Joint Purchasing Consortium for the 2014-15 school years. The company with the lowest bid where specifications were met. A copy of the individual will be filed in the district's business office. That's one WB Mason for $57,005.
Question.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept and approve the audit financial statements in single audit for the Penn Trafford School District for the 2012-13 school year as submitted by Sarp and Company, certified public accountants. A copy of the audit will be filed in the business office.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve a resolution requesting a 20-year variance from PDE which would allow the proposed construction project to be considered reimbursable by the state.
Second by Dr. Petrusy.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize access architecture... Start all over again. Move to authorize access architecture to submit Plan Con Part F documents to PDE for the high school project renovation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And the last one, Madam President. Move to adopt prevailing wage reform resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to enact legislation that would reform the state's prevailing wage law that artificially infuses costs for school construction and renovation projects.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all for this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Katsasik. Mr. Leonard, Buildings and Grounds Safety.
I have nothing under Buildings, Grounds, Safety tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Niemack, Employee Relations, Negotiations, Transportation.
Nothing to report tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Niemack. Dr. Trey, Food Service.
No report till next month, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Mr. Petrusy, Personnel and Curriculum.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to put additional substitute teachers' support personnel for the month of April 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Okay, question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize administration request three eight-hour days and one two-hour early dismissal day for Department of Education under Act 80 for the 2014-15 school year. The release time will be used for teacher in service, parent conferences, curriculum development, and long-range plan activities.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following resignation effective May 16, 2014, Sandra Good, Lunchroom A, at Penn Middle School.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Reed 180 High School field trip to Ballin', Maryland on Friday, May 9, 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Our summer all patents, motion number five. Move to approve the following resolution terminating employee 20131-4001 effective Tuesday, April 15, 2014 pursuant to Section 514 of the Public School Code of 1941 as amended.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Okay, resolution. The Board of School Directors of Penn Trafford School District approves the administration recommendation to terminate employee number 20131-4001 as a non-professional employee of the district based on Act 14, 2014, statement charges. Certified true copy resolution adopted by the Board of School Directors on a Penn Trafford School District at a bully meeting held on April 14, 2014.
That's a resolution, yeah. That's all, I'm sorry, Madam President, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leonard, Policy, Public Relations, Legislative Title II.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have one order to do. I would like to make a motion to accept and file the minutes of superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, March 3, 2014.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koschko.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, Mr. Leonard, I believe you have taxes, insurance, and census.
That's the one that gets carried over next month.
Okay.
Yeah, I have nothing to add tonight.
Okay. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. The solicitor has no report this evening.
Okay, and PTEA representative?
Sean's absent.
Sean's absent, so we have no report there. At this time, I'd like to hear a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
Second, this meeting is adjourned at 8:05 on April 14.